Good evening. It is seven o'clock. A call to order, the October first, two thousand and twenty four meeting of the Fort Atkinson City Council. Clerk Everett, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Becker.
Here.
Councilman Jacob.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Schultz.
Here.
President Lescoher.
Here.
Item three, public hearings. There aren't on this evening. Item four, public comment. The city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon. Name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. And please note for those following along online, if anyone on the Zoom wishes to speak during the public comment period, please raise your virtual hand through Zoom as the chat box is not monitored during the meeting. And those on the call, please remain muted if you are not recognized to speak. We have no one who has signed up in person to offer comments this evening. At this time, I'd ask if anyone is online and would like to offer some public comment to, please unmute yourself and identify yourself. Just give pause for a moment in case anyone is taking themselves off mute. Okay, hearing done. We will move on. Item five, consent agenda. The consent agenda outlined below is hereby presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, items five A through five E.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, motion is to approve the consent agenda as listed, items five A through five E. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item six, petitions, requests, and communications. There aren't on this evening. Resolutions and ordinances, item seven A, first reading of an ordinance and annexing the territory addressed twelve twenty-two Van Buren Street to be addressed one thirteen Wilson Avenue to the city of Fort Atkinson. We have building and zoning administrator Drager.
Got it. Good evening. Yes, so this, uh, this, ordinance annexing the territory is brought forward by John Jane Anderson, the owners of the property. They petitioned to annex. They, when they purchased the property in two thousand and twenty-three, they started doing some improvements on it. Their septic system had some issues and by ordinance, since we have utilities available in Wilson Avenue, they're required to hook up to the city, which requires annexation into the city. Along with this, there is a CSN that you'll see later on in the agenda. There is an outlot that is currently in the city that's Zone SR seven, which is also owned by John and Jane. And that will be by a CSM joint together, which I guess then that access to Wilson Avenue. There is a financial analysis with this. There's a lump sum of two thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-five cents. That's owed to the town of Koshinon by state statute, and that will come out of the economic development expense account. This was reviewed by plan commission last week, and they did recommend the city council perform the first reading of the ordinance. I'd be welcome any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to direct the city manager to prepare the ordinance for a second reading at the meeting on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion in a second to move this to its second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, the motion is to direct the city manager to prepare the ordinance for a second reading at the meeting on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Reports of officers, boards, and committees, item eight A, city managers' report. Manager Houseman.
Thank you. Thank you to the wastewater treatment facility staff for hosting an open house on September twenty-first. It was lightly attended, but those who did attend were able to get a personal tour of the facility and enjoy lots of snacks. On September twenty-sixth, I presented a Fort Atkinson update and outlook to the residents of the Fair Haven Senior Facility in Whitewater and enjoyed a tour of their new newly remodeled facility. On September twenty-seventh, members of the Evergreen Cemetery Association and representatives from the Legion, the Fort Atkinson Chamber of Commerce, local businesses, and city officials, including council president Lescoher and council member Schultz, welcomed Governor Tony Evers to Fort Atkinson. He toured the Evergreen Cemetery and had a short social gathering. Thank you to everyone involved for making the governor feel welcome here in the city. Over the weekend, Chief Peterson and fourteen fire department representatives attended the final alarm ceremony in Wisconsin Rapids, where the names of the three Fort Atkinson firefighters were added to the Wisconsin Fire and EMS Memorial. William Gross, Herman Smith, and Frank Hoffman were killed in the line of duty on December seventeenth, nineteen twenty-three. Thank you to everyone who attended to support the department members and their families, and thank you to those here, both Merrily and Chief Peterson, for your work in uncovering some of their stories. So that's really important. Thank you very much. Fall hydrant flushing began on September twenty-seventh, and we'll run through Friday, October eleventh. Please see the city's website or social media for more information. The city council will participate in the two thousand and twenty-five operating and capital budget and twenty-six through thirty capital improvements plan workshop on October ninth from four P M. to seven P M. in this room. All city departments will be presenting operating and capital plans for the upcoming year. The fire department will host an open house on Saturday, October twelfth, from eleven A M. to three P M. at the fire station. Please plan to attend. The presidential and general election is coming up on Tuesday, November fifth. There's still time to register to vote and cast an absentee ballot if you're unable to make it to the municipal building on election day. Also recall that the city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November fifth, has been moved to accommodate the election. That first council meeting in November will now be on Thursday, November seventh. The Fort Atkinson Historic Preservation Commission has announced a new historic preservation award program, which is designated or designed to recognize completed historic restoration and preservation projects that preserve the rich history of Fort Atkinson's architecture. To learn more about eligibility and nomination, visit the Historic Preservation Commission's page on the city's website. Just a reminder that the city is still hiring. If you know anyone who's interested in joining our team, please point them to the job opportunities page on the city's website. And finally, I just want to give a shout out to our staff. Here, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities issued their October magazine just recently, and it features thirteen of the city's city hall selfies between the front cover and embedded in the magazine. So again, we're putting ourselves out there a little bit more, which I think is very positive thing. So thank you to everyone who participated in City Hall selfie day. And please read through your municipality magazine when you get a chance. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Item nine, unfinished business. There is no unfinished business this evening. New business. Item ten A, review and possible action relating to change order number three for the Public Works and Parks Operations Facility, Public Works Superintendent Williamson.
Good evening. Before you, in your packet is the memorandum and subsequent supporting documentation for change order number three. I won't go through the background paragraph as it's the same as the last one, which essentially says we approved this a long time ago, but we're moving forward. As part of this process of getting this facility built, we did set aside contingency fund for items that we come across and uncover during the building process and items that we may determine as we're building that would improve the facility over the long haul. So we've had two change orders come before the council prior to this one. This change order number three has quite a few items, all of them fairly small items, so we collected as many as we could, so we don't waste the council's time. But the actual change order itself is in the in the packet for you. There are ten items. And they they range in price and scope, but essentially, a good deal of them are items that we came across, so we thought would improve the facility and campus itself over the long haul. We made some changes to the fireside parking lot grading, which is along our our north or I'm sorry, our south border. And we added some curb and gutter to protect a telephone box and some other minor things. Some of the larger ticket items was replacing a power feed and panel to the disconnect to the west garage. We discovered during the building process that we have no space available left in that panel. That panel is forty years old with forty-year-old breakers. We determined it's probably best now while we have the opportunity to make the improvement to make that improvement and allow for some some use and expansion in that facility for the future. So that that is, in a nutshell, kind of what we have in front of you. If you've got any questions, I certainly can answer them for you, but staff is recommending the council approve change order number three in the amount of sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Are there any questions for superintendent?
Tom, are you, you know, we're moved quite along in the project. Are you expecting that we'll get too many other items?
No, I think we can, at least my my opinion is that we can safely assume that we're, there's smaller items that will come across. I mean, your minor adjustments that will come across, the the mass expense of getting us up and out of the ground and uncovering things that we didn't know were buried. That's all gone now. We've gotten to the point now where they're actually pouring concrete floor in the building. So I think we're at the stage now where you'll we'll see fewer items and much smaller ticket items come across the council's agenda.
Appreciate you grouping these in one, but feel free to bring them forward to us whenever they arise.
Yeah, you bet, for sure. Yeah.
I would move to approve change order three of the Public Works and Parks Operations Facility Construction Contract. The cost not to exceed sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Second.
I have motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, motion is to approve change order three of the Public Works and Parks Operations Facility Construction Contract at a cost not to exceed sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Item ten B, review and possible action relating to a certified survey map for the property located at twelve hundred Whitewater Avenue. Administrator Drager.
Oh, this is a CSM. I think if you looked in your, I'm sure you did, but looking in the packet, there was a plat of survey as well as a preliminary CSM. The plat of survey was brought forward first prior to the preliminary CSM after realizing that the moving of those proper lines and creating a new, essentially a new lot, required to have that done by CSM. So that's the reason for both of them in there. But what's nice about that plat of survey is it does give you a depiction of what is currently there, which is a commercial building along Whitewater Avenue and a vacant lot to the west of it. The proposal here is to move a portion of that existing lot along Whitewater Avenue and combine that with a vacant area in the back, making that vacant lot larger and bringing the commercial building into just a standalone lot, which does meet the U M U zoning requirements for the most part, other than some setbacks of that current building. But this change with the CSM does not affect that. That will remain whether it's approved or not. The building is just in the in parts of the right of way in in this situation. This was reviewed by plan commission last week as well, and they recommended it be moved to the city council and approved. One thing there, the larger lot, the owner's intention here is for a larger piece of development. That was the reason for it. The U M U does support residential, but a large other variety of other developments that could possibly come forward for that. And the thought is that the larger lot gives more of an opportunity for something to potentially move in there. Staff does recommend approval of the CSM. I'm open for any questions.
So Jed, I was going to ask about what you just commented on, because I think I had read in the plan commission packet, they were talking about possibly like a multifamily project, or it sounds like maybe it could be like a mixed use or commercial.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, the U M U does support multifamily residential as well as a variety of other things. It is one of our most broad zoning or zoning districts. But that is was the thought behind the preliminary CSM in making that a larger that it might open an opportunity for a larger residential developments, what they're thinking. Steve Mode and Joanne Larson are doing this on behalf of the owner, and they're they're thinking it makes it more marketable for that type of development being that it's larger.
Definitely. Any other questions?
I move to approve the cert certified survey map for the property located at twelve hundred Whitewater Avenue. Second.
I have motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, motion is to approve the certified survey map for the property located at twelve hundred Whitewater Avenue. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item ten C, review and possible action relating to a certified survey map for the property located at twelve twenty-two Van Buren Street to be addressed as one thirteen Wilson Avenue.
Oh, yes, this is something I mentioned earlier with the ordinance for annexation. This is a town of Koshinon lot that is, we're proposing to annex with that with that ordinance. But there's that outlot there that is the one that's connected to the city that they use as an access point. Part of the requirement for this is that there be access to Wilson Avenue, so that it would be the reason for the CSM combining those, that outlot and this parent lot, the town of Koshinon, which would be part of the city after annexation, of course. But this is also prequel to that, requiring them to combine those by CSM. And then the reason for addressing that Wilson instead of Van Buren is Van Buren kind of dies into Wilson Avenue just south of of this driveway. And according to John and Jane, there's difficulty in people finding their address to begin with. It's just more appropriate to be on Wilson Avenue. And plan commission also reviewed this and recommended a city council approval.
Any questions?
I move to approve the certified survey map for the property located at twelve twenty-two Van Buren Street to be addressed one thirteen Wilson Avenue.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, motion is to approve the certified survey map for the property located at twelve twenty-two Van Buren Street to be addressed one thirteen Wilson Avenue. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item ten D, review and possible action relating to the elevator repair project at the Hord Historical Museum with Schumacher Elevator Company at a cost not to exceed ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars in two thousand and twenty-five with a down payment of twenty-five thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-four. Museum Director Lee.
Good evening, city council. Just some very quick background. The museum has an elevator that goes to three floors. Currently, it's been in place for about thirty years. It's been obsolete for about fifteen years of those. And so we are looking at a repair project that would replace basically everything you can't see, unfortunately. So we won't really see the benefits of the repair, but we will feel them when the elevator continues to work. And this is something that I had included in my two thousand and twenty-five C I P. However, Schumacher Elevator, the company doing the repair, requested a down payment this year, which is why I am here. Just again, some other background, all of the museums, C I P budget items are funded through the city share of the Mary Hord Trust. And so this project would be funded through that as well. Generally, the city reimburses itself for its expenses as they come through. The elevator is still currently working. However, we know we are on borrowed time with it, and I purposely let out any elevator puns in all of this. So I think the Fort Atkinson Historical Society did review the project and did recommend to approve it. Any questions?
We recognize that this is a unique situation, given that the city council has not seen the two thousand and twenty-five C I P yet. That will be presented at the workshop next week. However, due to timing and getting on the schedule for two thousand and twenty-five, Schumacher did request this down payment. So that is why it is on the agenda. It is a rather unique item that we excuse me, hope to not have to do things like this in the future, just just like our, you know, some of those truck purchases and things of that nature, where we're trying not to tie the hands of of future councils. But unfortunately, this is the reality that we're living in right now, where we do need this down payment to get onto the schedule.
I recall you saying in the meeting, there's like a twenty, twenty-six week lead time on this.
It is. So for a planned repair job, it's a twenty-week lead on it. So it can imagine what an emergency repair job would be. The bottom line is the museum needs an elevator. So and we can't wait twenty weeks for it. So that's why we're trying to be proactive with this project. As I mentioned, the elevator is still working, however. So yes, so we are looking at a fairly decently time for it. And again, that's Schumacher is already working on it as well for their plans, too.
I would move to approve the elevator repair project at the Hord Historical Museum with Schumacher Elevator Company at a cost not to exceed ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars in two thousand and twenty-five with a down payment of twenty-five thousand in two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
I have motion in a second.
Just one question, Merrily, you may have mentioned this, and I apologize if I didn't catch it. Is Schumacher basically the only vendor for this type of repair area?
Not technically, but we have Schumacher proprietary property proprietary equipment already in the elevator. So it made the most sense just to go with them.
Got it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, motion is to approve the elevator repair project at the Hord Historical Museum with Schumacher Elevator Company at a cost not to exceed ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars in two thousand and twenty-five with a down payment of twenty-five thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-four. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
Item ten E, review and possible action on a storm sewer lining contract for Roosevelt Street with Visu Sewer at a cost not to exceed thirty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Director of Public Works and City Engineer Sally.
Good evening. We have about three hundred feet of storm sewer running roughly from Elsie Street to Madison Avenue on Roosevelt. That's over kind of at the the northeast corner of Berry School. We've had this particular pipe be a problem in the past, and we tried to repair it with a point repair that has not held up. And so we're going to line the sewer and put a more permanent fix on it. Now, we have three bids for this that were frankly wildly separate or different. The bid that we had from Visu Sewer for thirty-two thousand dollars was the low bid. We've worked with them in the past on a number of things. And they are a known entity to us. We have not worked with the other two bidders in the past. So I would ask council to move forward with that project with Visu Sewer and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have related to that.
Andy, is this kind of what is causing the flooding in that area when it rains?
No, this doesn't have anything to do with the flooding. The flooding in that area is largely due to one of two things. A, undersized sewers, which we know they're undersized. But B, those sewers haven't been cleaned for a bit, so there is a chance that there's some debris and obstruction in there that we don't know about. Generally, storm sewers are relatively self-cleaning, because there is such a volume of water that moves through there. But we have been investigating some sewers in the older parts of the city, which would include this area around Berry and finding that there are some areas that where there's some pipes have been compromised and that are leading to some inefficient flows. But generally speaking, most of these pipes in the older parts of the city were sized for events that are much too small today. So.
I just know regularly I hear especially right there in that Elsie Roosevelt area, there's constantly flooding.
Yeah, it accepts a lot of water coming down from over on Charles Street and down the hill of Elsie, and that catch basin is the first one for probably three or four blocks around in that area. It's not an ideal design.
Andy, do you anticipate that the one oh six project where we redo Riverside Drive will help alleviate some of the water problem?
If you'd asked me about five years ago, I'd say yes, Bruce, but the D O T is the holder of that answer, to be quite frank. And we have asked them for some significant stormwater improvements along Riverside Drive, but I can't commit at this point to see, to say that those will actually be implemented in the design.
I know doing Rockwell Street down by my property, that what I used to refer to as Lake Purdy.
Yeah.
Definitely cleaned, shorted, shortened the life and the size of Lake Purdy.
Yeah, yeah, Lake Purdy still still appears occasionally, but not as frequently as it used to. And that is consistent with what the design was, was to basically allow that system to accept more water at the more frequent, smaller events, but it will still back up when we get a pretty significant rainfall. But you're right, we're seeing some at least relief from the frequency of those. Any other questions?
This is the one that there was a link to the video of that, correct? One of the materials that I see was this tied to that?
That we did take videos of this. I'd be surprised if I put a hot link in the.
It was in one of the material that you, but scintillating stuff.
It is pretty, if we want to nerd out on this, we can do so later, I think, President Lescoher, but it is pretty cool stuff.
There is.
I see it now, too.
Is it?
It's one of the emails.
I'm glad. I'm glad it came through.
Interesting that they.
Yeah.
The link.
Well, thank you for being thorough. I appreciate that.
I'm impressed.
Shoot, I didn't realize that was a working link. I'm gonna have to watch that.
Cool. Don't want to get your hopes up too high.
Ah, all right, I will. This is very exciting. I'm gonna move to approve the storm sewer lining contract for Roosevelt Street with Visu Sewer at a cost not to exceed thirty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, motion is to approve the storm sewer lining contract for Roosevelt Street with Visu Sewer at a cost not to exceed thirty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Claims, appropriations, and contract payments. Item eleven A, review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payment.
Move to approve the verified claims as presented.
Second.
The motion a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, motions to approve the verified claims as presented. This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Jacob.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Lescoher.
Aye, motion is approved unanimously. Miscellaneous, item twelve A, the city council may consider a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to state statute section nineteen point eight five one E to conduct other business specified where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The F F F A P P A Union Memorandum of Understanding.
Remain in closed session.
Oh, and we will also remain in closed session. And and also, just I would point out that city council will remain in closed session pursuant to the same statute, state statute nineteen point eight five one E to deliberate and negotiate the purchase of public properties where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Yes.
I move to convene in the closed session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five one E to conduct other specified business where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session and remain in closed session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five one E to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second.
I have motion in a second. Any discussion on that? So the motion is to convene in closed session, as noted. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. All right, it is eight eighteen. We are back in open session. Item twelve C, review and possible action relating to a memorandum of understanding between the city of Fort Atkinson and the Fort Atkinson Professional Police Association. Manager Houseman.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, we had a wage reopener with the Fort Atkinson Professional Police Association for two thousand and twenty-five. And as we discussed in closed session, that was agreed upon by the police union. And I would be looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Fort Atkinson and the Fort Atkinson Professional Police Association that provides for a five percent wage increase as of one one twenty-five for the sergeants, detectives, and thirty-six-month-plus employees for the police department.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Fort Atkinson and the Fort Atkinson Professional Police Association relating to two thousand and twenty-five wages.
Second.
I have motion in a second. Any discussion? I would just add that. I would just add that I appreciate the professionalism that the police negotiating team continues to bring to the table in these kinds of matters. Any other? Comments or discussion? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Fort Atkinson and the Fort Atkinson Professional Police Association relating to two thousand and twenty-five wages. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved, item thirteen adjournment.
Second.
My motion a second to adjourn, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, we are adjourned, thank you all.